This year, this month, I've been asked to chair the meeting as Mayor Pro Tem. Our Mayor Chris Miller is with us virtually. He's under the weather, so I hope he has a quick recovery. All rise for the pledge allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Also, present, I'm virtually present as well as Attorney Gallow and, of course, as I mentioned, Mayor Miller. Councilwoman Foster is here and the Councilwoman Cheney and Councilman Tillman are all present. Or is absent this evening, so that is our roll call. Next order of business is to approve the minutes, the regular minute, to review and approve the minutes for our regular meeting, December 4th and December 9th. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Mr. McCarron, before we vote, we should read the record of closed meeting?
I will do that after we approve the regular meeting minutes. And all in favor of, is there any additions or corrections, first of all, to the regular minutes? Hearing none, I ask for all those in favor of approving the regular minutes for December 7th and December 9th, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, aye. So carried. Now, I'd like to present the minutes of the closed session. I'll read those for you. Let's scroll down into my packet and find it. All right, here we go. On December, City of Tannetown held a closed meeting under the Maryland Open Meetings Title VII, Order of Procedure, Subtitle V, Meeting, Section 3-05B, this meeting closed session. Citation of the authority and purpose of a meetings in accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Title VII, Order of Procedure, Subtitle V, Meeting, Section 3-05B, this meeting closed session. Yet to discuss, to consider the acquisition of real property for the public purpose in matters directly related thereto. The following is a listing of the topics to be discussed. The authority of the Open Meetings Act having such discussion in a closed meeting and the citation of the applicable provisions of the Act, Citation 3-305B3, land acquisition, discussed negotiations relating to real property purchase. On a motion to hold, a closed meeting was made by Councilmember Tillman and seconded by Councilmember Foster. The body voted unanimously to approve this motion, with the exception of Councilwoman Cheney, who was absent. This statement is made by Mayor Miller, who was the presiding officer. The topics discussed, reference to plan for M.D., recharge requirements and compliance, and persons' presence in the closed sessions were listed above. Mayor Miller, all of the above noted, Manager Wyprak, Attorney Gallow, he was virtually present, and Clerk Kelman. The actions taken in the closed sessions, it was the consensus of the council, to presume the appraisal of this specified property, and consensus of the council for the staff to create an outline of the water recharge benefit assessment fee. And on a motion to adjourn at 9:57 by Councilman Tillman and seconded by Councilwoman Foster, was carried four to zero. Are any additions or corrections? All in favor of the minutes of the closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to need a motion for that first, please?
I don't, right, I don't think we had a motion on the record of closed session.
Okay. I forgot. All right, next item on the agenda is a...
Mayor Pro Tem, shall we take a motion and second, just to get the minutes right?
Can we have a motion and second on the closed meeting, you mean?
I move that we accept the closed session statement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the reception of the delegation for speed cameras. Is Michael Phelan among us?
Yes, sir.
I can turn the meeting over to you and let you address council.
Thank you, sir, and mayor and council, I appreciate your time today. Mayor, I hope you feel better. I know we've never met in person, but hopefully this is a quick recovery for you. My name is Mike Phelan. I am the current Director of Strategic Accounts for a company called Ultimate. We're a speed and red light enforcement-based company here in Maryland. Our home office is down the street a little bit in Lanham, so right between DC and Baltimore. We've been around in the photo enforcement industry for the last 15 or so years. I've been with the company since 2015 and prior to that, I was in law enforcement, both in North Carolina and a couple of years here in Maryland, down in State Marys County. So, understanding the need for force multiplier, extra equipment that can be used, especially in a smaller city like yourselves, where maybe you would like to have some type of extra enforcement capabilities without having to go out and hire more personnel or readjust where they're assigned. Just a little bit about our company. Right now, we currently have about 72 jurisdictions that we represent, issuing over 8 million citations to date. And of course, you can see, we're in, I think, 10 states now, almost 11. Difference with photo enforcement is, states have to have a legislation passed to be able to do it. Here in Maryland, it's been around since about 2007, 2008, starting in red light. So, we've been well-established with our back office and our company and the amount of jurisdictions that we do support here in Maryland. Right now, it's about 20 total Maryland jurisdictions. And of course, after the meeting, if you would like a list of some of them, I know, I think Chief, I gave you a few of them originally when we first met, but I can also pass off information as far as some references on that end as well, if you would like that. Again, we're based in Maryland, so we have a lot of our information or a lot of our equipment is built in-house. We design and build and maintain them at our office in Lanham. We don't necessarily build all the equipment. We do outsource some of like the radars and certain things that we get from other companies, but the main gist of our company is housed there in Lanham. So, if a camera does go down or we have to repair anything, it's a quick fix, especially for those that have our equipment here in Maryland. You have top-notch customer service across the board. It's 100% violator-funded. By that means, is there's no upfront cost for the equipment or install of the cameras. Everything comes out of the payments received by the violations. So, part of our contract's cost neutrality. You'll never have to worry about paying out of pocket for the equipment or for the services that we provide during the lack of the contract. Of course, you know, there are ebbs and flows with how violations are issued and of course, how they are paid depending on a lot of different factors, but of course, we can go into that if there's any questions. And also, if there's anything that comes up, feel free to interrupt me. I'm not set on going through this particular presentation in a particular order. So, if you have a question, feel free to interrupt and I'll jump in and answer those as needed. Just a little bit about the equipment that we do offer. We have two basic style systems. There's a pole-mounted system, and we also have a trailer-based system. Obviously, there's pros and cons for each one of them. The names that we have on here are just our internal names, but basically, you have the same photo enforcement devices that are out there, just in different platforms. Our Blackhawk that we have up there uses a 4D radar, so we have multiple lanes. So, in those jurisdictions, we have maybe four to five lanes in a single direction. We have one unit cover that entire capability. Then we have a Silverhawk, which is more of your bidirectional, which uses LiDAR. So, it's a little bit different technology than the radar system is. And then with those, we also have them located on a pole or a box-mounted unit, so it can be, looks like a utility box, trash can, whatever you want to call it, that can be battery-powered and/or plugged into a dedicated power source. Part of our installation is we'll come in and we'll do an assessment of the site, make sure that it's feasible with, either we'll install our own pole, or if there's a pole that maybe the local jurisdiction that already owns, we might be able to mount directly on that to help reduce the costs and downtime to getting the cameras up and running. We do all the permitting, so we work with State Highway Administration, local permits, whether it was with the county, and we'll cover all the work that goes with that. We have a full implementation team that will work with members of the police department or members of the city in order to make sure that's a smooth transition, get signatures that are needed. Of course, timelines vary, depend upon S.H.A. personnel, some of the requirements that might be needed depending on where the cameras are located. So, usually, we aim for five months from the time a contract is signed to be able to get things fully up and running. Obviously, we shoot for a lot sooner than that. We'll start doing permitting and training and working with the state and courts, you know, as soon as possible if we get to that point. Part of that also is our back office. We have a proprietary back office. It is web-based, called Viaview. So, members of the police department will be able to log in. They'll have a dedicated login portal. They'll be able to approve violations. The chief will have the ability, or his designated, to run reports, monthly reports, both on issued, paid, what was rejected, the amount of payments that were coming in. This is also where we keep track of all the financial systems, so any time a payment is made, whether it's through a lockbox, whether it's through our customer service payment center or online, we collect that information and those payments, and then on a monthly basis, we distribute that to the jurisdiction through ACH transfer. And of course, we'll work through all those details out, but this will be another location where, whether the chief or member of the city designated, can log in and see how those payments are being collected and keep track financially of where things are moving. Also, we have a court terminal as well, so once, and if anybody does decide to want to go to court, we'll work with District Court here in Carroll County and be able to, is it Carroll, correct? Okay, I couldn't remember exactly, so I apologize. Carroll County District Court, to be able to set a dedicated court date, and then all the court terminal is digital, so the chief or his designated, will just have to bring in a tablet or his mobile terminal, and he'll be able to log in and pull up all the video information that's needed for court on that end. So, there's very little from a time restraint standpoint for law enforcement, minus just the approval of the events. And really, the approval of the events is logging into our system. Takes about 10 to 15 seconds on average to look at an event and decide whether to reject it or approve it. And of course, all that time depends on the total number of violations that are collected throughout that day, and we process on a regular basis. We like to say the river is always flowing, so constantly, we're sending events over to either Maryland DMV, or we use companies called Inlets to be able to get owner information. All that's all encrypted, so no one has access to that information besides those that are logged into our system. We fingerprint all of our employees as well, so anybody that has access to our database has gone through a background check. But the chief or his designated, that's really the only fingerprint they'll have on a day-to-day operation of the system. Everything else is run by us and our team. We do daily calibrations. We make sure the system is serviced constantly, so we're constantly remoting into it, making sure that it's up and running. If there's any downtime, I get notified, or a project manager gets notified, we'll let you guys know, hey, the camera's down for whatever reason, and then we'll work to correct it. If it's a simple fix, then we'll get through it. If it's going to be out for an extended period of time, we'll swap the camera out with one of those that we have on our shelves. So, again, to eliminate downtime, you don't worry about the camera itself or equipment being shipped back overseas, or waiting for something to come in from another part of the country. And again, just some of our background, where we come from, 20 years of experience. We're based right here in the United States, more particularly, right here in Maryland, and we have quite an extensive history from our time being around, especially being started here. And lastly, the slide I have is just some of the speed study results that we did back in October. I'm not sure if, you know, mayor or council, if anybody's had a chance to review these or if you had a chance to look over them, but we put a device out on this particular stretch of road. It's kind of hard to see, but that was October 3rd, 4th, and then the 7th. I think that was a Thursday, Friday, and a Monday, if I remember correctly. So, we let it run. Hours of operation for a speed camera in Maryland are 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 52 weeks a year, so regardless if it's a holiday, or if school's in session or summertime, the state allows you to authorize those cameras to be used. That doesn't mean you have to do it that way. I have plenty of jurisdictions that alter their schedule depending upon whether school's in session, whether it's summertime, whether there's after-school activities, but just from a basis standpoint of getting a baseline for a total number of violations, we like to just do a speed study just to show you as a jurisdiction, kind of what is happening on that particular stretch of road. So, just as an overview, you can see, the first day, there's about 277 violations that were captured. That's going both directions, at the threshold of 12 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. So, the speed limit, I believe, is 25 miles an hour. So, at 37 or more is when the vehicles or the device is capturing everybody, but we filtered out those that were doing less or more, less than 12, so that way, you've got a good snapshot of who is being captured. And again, total vehicle average as well, so during that timeframe, averaging around 3,000, a little bit less than 3,000 vehicles a day are driving down that particular stretch of road. Again, this is a black case on a pole with a radar in it. It's not as conspicuous as a speed camera out there, so I would say you would see probably a 45, 50% decline just off the bat of putting signs and a camera out, just because it's driver behavior, right? You see that sign, you see the camera out there, you're automatically going to slow down. And again, it's hitting at 12, so if you're doing 11, 10, they still are technically speeding throughout the school zone, but state law doesn't allow us to capture an image until they hit that 12 mile an hour threshold. The cameras work. We capture the rear of the vehicle, so as they pass by the camera, our radar will track the vehicle, will collect the photograph. We use IR illuminator. We don't use white light flash, so during this time of the year where it's dark in the morning, dark in the evening, or low-light conditions, it's not really all the way dark as it was earlier in the year, but there's no white light flash. So, then as the day goes on, we adjust the settings and the camera automatically will take, still take those photographs to give you the clearest image. We have a video, it's about five to seven seconds long, that law enforcement can watch just to show that that vehicle was in motion, and then there's two still images showing the vehicle in motion as well. We take that license plate image, we blow it up, so it's a more zoomed-in view, and we send that information off to the NVA, so that we can get their owner information back. If it's approved by law enforcement, we mail it out to the registered owner, and then there's payment instructions on the citation. They can request court, or they can make a payment. If they don't, we'll send out a delinquent notice on your behalf as well. And then after that, if it's a Maryland tag, they are eligible to be flagged, so their registration could be flagged in the state of Maryland if they don't pay. At a state, we don't really, there's nothing that the state allows us to do, minus if the city would like to do collections. You do have the opportunity to do, work with a third-party collections company to be able to go after at-a-state violators for the civil fine. 50/50 on whether or not jurisdictions do that. It just depends on the volume and, I guess, the need and the feelings from the jurisdiction. So, short and sweet presentation. I'll take questions if there's anything that you guys have particulars on. Like I said, I've been doing this for almost 10 years now, so I can answer pretty much anything and everything that you guys might have had, and I can go back and forth to different parts of the slide if you need me to.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Phelan?
I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
What percentage of the units that you have out in operation are fixed versus portable?
Right now, I don't know exact number. I would say we're probably closer to 60% fixed and 40% mobile. To be honest with you, the trailers are, their diesel generator, like you would see in a construction zone, lighting trailer that we converted over. We do have solar panel trailers that we're kind of exploring through and kind of using that as an option. This time of year, it's, solar's difficult, obviously, for reasons of the sun, but we, and we can do solar on a pole as well. It just depends on, again, there's a lot of dynamics that come into play with that, but we're trying to move away from a mobile, the trailer, diesel trailer being our only mobile solution, only for obvious reasons. In more rural settings, it's perfect, just because you have the ability to run for about two weeks without having anybody to touch it. It automatically charges the batteries, so it only turns on when it needs to charge the batteries, so it's not running all the time. We have probably maybe 10 or so around Prince George's County, Maryland, that are still active, but again, we're trying to transition those out and put in a pole and get dedicated power to those locations.
I would think, especially in our application here, this is in a fairly densely populated area, that they don't want to hear that generated.
No, and I know when the chief and I talked, and I went to the location, I was like, in my brain already going, I wouldn't even suggest putting a trailer out here, just because of the location.
If there was, if your trailer, if you get to a point where there are better solar applications, and we decide to go with a portable unit just to be able to move it around to various approvable locations for one, would the unit need to be recalibrated every time it gets moved, or?
We would recalibrate every time, just for sake of, you know, honestly, to know that the camera's run. But anytime we move it, and even if we adjust the camera, let's just say highway, something caused a camera to just shift a little bit, when we come out here, we would realign the radar and the camera itself, and then we would do a full recalibration check. But it also does that every morning, so prior to enforcement, our cameras will automatically do a calibration check to make sure they're within their calibration specs. If it's at a spec, it'll redo it again, and then if it fails, it'll obviously notify our technicians, we can log in and make sure, see what's going on. Sometimes if a vehicle passes through as it's doing its calibration check, the radar will cause, it'll cause it to be a little funky, and it has to wait until it's a stretch of, the road is completely clear, but we do calibration check it every day. Self-checks every day, yep, that's part of the requirements the state puts on us as a vendor.
Who sets the... Oh, you have a question, Mayor Pro Tem? I was still working on a couple of questions here. So, I assume the municipality has set the fine amounts?
Fine amount is set by the state. It's $40, and there's nothing you can't, nothing we can do about it. There, you, some agencies have a late fee attached to it. There's some differing opinions on what the state law says is a late fee and what is allowed and what's not allowed. I would recommend just sticking with the $40, and you can, you know, once that vehicle does, if they don't pay and they become flagged, the NVA assigns their own fees on top of that, that the violator would be, or the citizen would be responsible for, but the base fine is $40, set by the state.
I understand that, at this point in time, because the state has not approved legislation to the contrary, that if a camera citation does go to court, that you have to have a trained officer there to testify?
Yes, an officer has to be there. We would provide the training for the law enforcement, so the very first time they would go, or first few times, I would be the one that would go, and I would be able to help out with the court process. After that, then it's on the officer to handle court by himself, or obviously, I can still show up if need be.
All right, and then my last question, now, signs have to get posted with this, correct?
Yes.
So, camouflaging the camera doesn't, isn't really of a lot of value if they've already been told and warned and there's a sign, and if they don't slow down, that's their problem. So, all right, that's it for me. Anybody else?
Anyone else have a question?
I've got one. Do I recall correctly that you also collected some data on East Baltimore Street, proximate to the school crosswalk, but that didn't yield the same level of violation indicators?
Correct. I didn't put that in my presentation. When Chief and I went through the data, we deemed that there wouldn't even be, it wouldn't be feasible to put a camera there. There was not enough to show that there was even a speeding issue at that point of location. Now, obviously, with the crossing guard and your crosswalk for the schools, you know, I get wanting to have something to kind of help just make sure people are more aware of it, but from a speed camera standpoint, there really isn't a need to have one at that location. And of course, as things change, you know, we could reevaluate it if that was something that the city, like they would want to do, but for now, we just left that one alone. And I can, if I didn't send you the information, I can send it to you again, so you have it, sir.
Just wanted to make sure everybody is aware that it was looked at.
Yeah, we did do two locations. And again, you know, this is within a school zone, established school zone, so if something changes and, you know, there's another location that the city deems that they might want to try, we can definitely put up a device and do another speed study for you, again, no cost, and we can figure out what the next best approach is for you.
Thank you. Before you go, though, Mr. Phelan, I'd like our attorney, Gallow, to weigh in on this issue. Are there any issues we need to be aware of here, Jay?
There's no issues as to the implementation of this, as far as the technical standpoint. There is a procedure. You can't just do this. You're going to have to pass an ordinance that's pretty specified by the state as to what it contains, and then you have to execute a contract with the vendor. And again, the state statute has a little bit of requirements of specifically what needs to be in there. So, there's a little work on your part if you want to do this. It's not simply just signing a contract and going, but, but a lot of other places have these, and it's not, you're not braising any new trails, so it's easy to do if you decide to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Phelan, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, can, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, Chris.
So, the, I just want to say that I'm fully in support of this. I'm not sure if you guys noticed, but again, that's a 10%, you know, people going 12 miles per hour over the speed limit on Tavanyan. I've gotten a few complaints myself in my, you know, Mary mailbox, and I'll say, you know, it's a very big concern to people out in that direction, it's just the speeding that's going on out there. So, again, I just wanted to throw that council's way. Thank you.
We need to...
Anyone else?
This evening, I'm hoping that we could have consensus as to support to pursue speed camera programs, so if there's consensus to move forward, we'll work with the city attorney on the legislative piece of it, the enabling legislation that we'll need to pass. So, you know, we are looking at a couple-month process to get that introduced and into the code, but this evening, if we could get consensus as to whether or not to move forward with such a program, I would appreciate it.
Personally speaking, I don't, I don't think I can support this with the numbers that I saw today. It's something that's been up the force before, and we turned it down then, and I just, I just don't think the juice is worth the squeeze, personally.
Let me understand, this was not done in the school zone area?
No, this was.
This was?
Yes.
Because I'm having difficulty with this stretch of Tavanyan that you're talking about.
It was...
That's where the test is done.
It was between Grand and King's Drive, I believe, from where the dot was on the image, so that's just before the turnoff to the schools.
Going into town, it's just before. I, when I set it up, I could see the entrance to the school sign, so it was within the marked school zones that are located, signs that are located on that stretch of road.
Sorry, I have one comment to make on that as well, just so everybody's aware, that whole stretch of Tavanyan isn't fully sidewalked, and there is kids that walk up and down that road. Again, please take that into consideration. What he said, you know, is 277 cars going 12 miles per hour over the speed limit. That's 39 miles, what, 37, 39 miles per hour over the posted speed limit on Tavanyan? Sorry, my brain's not working. Again, just please take that under consideration. There's a lot of kids that walk up and down that road.
This stretch of road has been traditionally been well-monitored. The stretch of road has been traditionally been well monitored with regular radar, I think.
That, that is true. The chief has deployed resources there quite frequently and was sharing some statistics with me before the meeting started. So we've, we've had, I think, over 400 offenses there in, in a year. And that's without signs telling people that, you know, there's a speed camera up ahead, of course, but.
There are signs, there were no signs or anything when you did the test, correct?
Not, not for the study note. I mean, just your standard school zone signs as you enter and exit the school zone. But nothing that showed that there was a test going on, which is why I said that, that decline after what this test shows versus even when the cameras get deployed, is a pretty significant drop just because of driver behavior. That psychological mentality changes when they see a sign. They see the physical camera there, so naturally people hit the brakes. Just like if you're driving on the highway and you see that trooper sit in the middle of the median, right? You just naturally tap your brakes, whether you're speeding or not. It's the same, same approach when it comes to speed cameras.
I know that also that, that the signs that, you know, your speed are roughly 80% effective, from what I understand. Question is, is that effective enough without having to go to the cameras? From a libertarian standpoint, I'm not particularly happy with that kind of surveillance. But from a safety standpoint, because there are, you know, kids that walk along the street in, in areas where there is no sidewalk, I am, safety has to trump my.
On the record too, we don't, there's no images captured unless they're doing 12 or more over the speed limit. So we don't, we don't have any data of who's driving in and through the location of the cameras unless they hit that threshold speed limit of 12 miles an hour over. So we just, we just know a vehicle went through. We have no way to find out what kind of vehicle it is or who's driving it. And it only is the images of the vehicles that are speeding.
So Jim, are you looking for a consensus to move forward with an ordinance?
Yes, that would be, that would be our first step, would be to do the enabling ordinance. And then we will talk through either a, I don't know if, you know, I'm sure there are other entities within Maryland whose contracts we could piggyback on. But typically, there would be a bidding process, you know, for any, any contract with, you know, a generation like this. But the first step would be the enabling legislation.
The consensus.
My consensus now, are we ready to move forward with enabling legis, registration, legislation? Or shall we table the whole matter? Maybe a show of hand would be the best way to do this. Anyone who is in favor of moving forward with the proper registration, raise your hand.
Ever moving forward with preparing the legislation, we will.
Yep. All right, that's three. And my, my hand's not raised, so it's three to one. So we'll move forward with the legislation.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, the statement about council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any conflict of interest on the agenda tonight? If you have nothing, I'd like to invite the public to comment on any non-agending, non-agenda items. Is anyone in the community that would like to voice a, present a point tonight?
We have one coming up.
Paul Cluth, I'm a resident of Tawny Town and a business owner, as you all know. I just wanted to communicate and everyone, and I have communicated this in the past, as many of you may know. I'm very much in favor, and that's the flavor that I've gotten from community and other business owners of Tawny Town having the ability of a monthly, consistent, quality newspaper produced outside of the city. A newspaper, again, would be great. It would also be the next step in the revitalization of our downtown and our, our city. So I think it's a real important, important move if the, the council can, can bless this. I do realize and understanding the logistics involved with a newspaper that we're talking about, it is going to be important for the community to support that newspaper. For it to be successful, you know, if you look at, you know, if you were like running a newspaper or whatever, you're going to have to have advertising. Important that the community supports the newspaper with advertising or some startup costs or other things. Just looking at it from a bottom line standpoint, that's going to be the crux of, of having a regular paper. But there's so much opportunity here to residents and the businesses that are happening in Tawny Town. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address counsel? Very well. Moving on to resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. We have up to, up for adoption tonight, Resolution 25, 2025-1, water allocation for January. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-1?
Would you approve Resolution 2025-01, water allocation for January?
Is there a second?
I will second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So Karen. Next, we have the city manager's report. Jim, do you have some words for us tonight?
Okay, not a whole lot of updates this evening. With regard to charter and code revisions, we'll talk a little more about this when we get down to new business. But we've been, I've been looking at the water and the building construction chapters with regard to recharge and how we can tweak things to implement a water recharge fee so that we can have the recharge necessary to increase pumping at our production wells. We'll get into that a little bit more down the agenda. As far as the sewer rehabilitation program, the work is ongoing. The contractor's making good progress. You'll see some details in that in your, in the Department of Public Works report. They've currently been active closer to the downtown end of the West Baltimore line, proximate to, I guess, the unit block of West Baltimore Street and the backyards of the properties there. So things are moving along, and they're still projecting to be finished by the middle of the month. With the exception of some areas that, things like, you know, grass seeding, and there may be some pavement that will have to wait until the weather warms up to really close it out. But the, the bulk of the actual construction and lining is expected to be done this month. Last thing I've got is, we did get the West Drew Drive water line replacement contract and, and surety was posted. So everything did get completed as far as commission, committing the funds by December 31st. So we now have fully committed all of our ARPA money. That's really all that I've got for right now, unless anybody has questions for me.
Questions for Jim?
Oh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, one last thing before we adjourn tonight. I would like to nail down our date for the Main Street discussion meeting. We had talked about having a special meeting for that. Most folks responded that they'd prefer the, I guess, third week in, in January. And I know the mayor prefers January 30th.
I will be out of town.
Jim, 28th, if everybody's okay with that as well, that works as well?
Either day is all right with me.
Okay.
Actually, the 28th is not, doesn't work very well for me. I have a meeting that evening, I'm sorry. 30th would be much better for me.
Actually, the 30th would be okay, because I'm traveling on the 31st. 30th is fine.
30th is definitely preferred here.
I can't do the 30th, but don't, like, go ahead and do it. It works for everybody but me. Go ahead and do it.
I also can change my 28th meeting if I must.
What does work for you?
28, 28, 29.
28 and 29 look good for me, too, so.
29 is all right.
29th, okay.
29th is good with me. You're good with, Mr. Karen, you good with 29th?
29th's good for me. It's good for the mayor.
That is unfortunately the one day that I'm not good for, probably.
Okay, that's not.
20, 27th, by chance, anybody?
That's a planning commission meeting.
That's right, that's right.
The 30th is.
Okay, we're back to the 30th.
30th is fine.
Okay, 30th.
Apologies, Councilmember Chaney, I'm sorry about that.
All righty, we'll, we'll put that together.
What time?
What time?
We want to do our usual 7:30, or would you like to start a little earlier?
I, you know, I, 7:30 is just so, and there's a lot to discuss, so I don't want to be here till 10, 10:30 at night. So let's start a little earlier.
Does, does 6:30 work?
6:30 is fine with me.
Is that okay with you?
I can't do the 30th, so you all, you all decide.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I can do 6:30.
All righty, 6:30.
Do with that?
6:30 on the 30th. Thank you all.
All right.
Sorry, just to go back to it, actually, can, can we try the 29th? Everybody's good with it? I'll just readjust my schedule.
29th, we can't. Or, or, oh, you're the one that said you couldn't do on 29th.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll adjust what I got going on then.
29th is fine also.
29, at 6:30.
29.
Okay, where are we now?
29.
So we're now at the 29th at 6:30.
That seemed to be one everybody could do, but the mayor, but the mayor's okay with that now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll adjust for it. I want to make sure we have as much of the counsel as we can there.
Thank you all very much.
Very good. So we got the 29th at 6:30. All right, next item before us is the departmental reports. Anybody have any questions? Or comments on the departmental reports?
Only thing that stood out to me, just, and this is just kind of off the wall, but well number 12, the, all the rest of the wells seem to be pretty stable, but that seemed to be jumping around. Is there some reason for that?
I don't think 12 was unusual. 17, though, did, the water level did drop this month in 17.
Right.
Not, not hugely, but, but it's noticeable. I think eight, nine. Oh, no, 12, yeah, 12 does, 12 does jump around a lot.
Yes, that, that, it stood out to me just because it does look like the Empire State Building turned upside down, so.
Yeah, and that's one of the more shallow wells also. I can, I can ask Public Works if there's, if that seems to be just a routine for that particular well, and.
Because the other well, the other shallow wells seem to have a, you know, kind of a linear drop to them. That's, that one just seemed to be a little bit off the wall, and I wondered if there was a reason.
And it, it could have to do also with the pumping.
Pumped, to refill the stand pipe? Would that have been?
That, that could have been an impact on it.
Yeah, I'm just curious, that's all. It just, it jumped out at me, so I was just curious about.
There, there may have been a, a change in the number of hours that the pump was running or something that could certainly influence that. But I'll, I'll get some info from DPW and share that.
All right, very good. Next item we have is the attorney's report.
Good evening, everybody. As you know, the start of the new year marks our election season. The town election is going to be May of this year, and so there are lots of things that have to happen in advance of that. Clara has been working on getting a schedule that she's going to go over tonight with you all. And it's pretty much set in the charter and the code, so there's not too much about it. The issue that you have before you all is that we need to make sure that the appointments to the election board are made well in advance of all of this, and also that the ethics board is fully staffed so that they can deal with this. As you recall, the ethics board has to approve the financial disclosure forms before the candidates are certified. So there's a specific window of like four days that that can happen. And so we want to make sure we know who those people are so that we can get that done in the timely manner. And the election board has to be the one that approves the forms that the candidates file to become candidates, and then approves the form once they're filed. And I think Clara can give you the details, but our current election board, aside from their term expiring, a lot of them are unable to continue or have resigned. So I know that Clara has forwarded some names to the mayor, and those need to be either approved this month or next month. If they are not approved in none of those two months, then the entire schedule for the election is going to need to be altered. So Clara, why don't you give the schedule for what the election's going to be and the things that are going to happen?
Okay, the 2025 city election is for three council member seats. The election is going to be on May 5th at the Tawny Town Police Station, located at 120 East Baltimore Street. And the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The candidate forms will be available beginning at 9:00 a.m. on February 18th. All of those forms must be submitted to the city by 4:00 p.m. on March 24th. The certification of candidates is scheduled for April 7th. Residents must register with Carroll County Election Board no later than April 7th to be able to vote in the city election. Absentee ballot request forms will be available on March 17th, and absentee ballots will be available beginning at 9:00 a.m. on April 14th. All of this information is going to be on our city website, and the formal election notice will be in the Carroll County Times and also on the city website by March 3rd.
Are we short of any names on, I know you said we're going to be short of people, and we need to get, appoint new members to the board of elections. Are we short anyone on the Ethics Commission?
Clara, do you have that answer?
We, we do have a nomination for this evening.
Are we talking about that anymore, or is that a separate item?
Covering on a separate item.
The nominations are later, yep.
Yep. So my understanding, and so we know the operation, is that the election board is going to do a lot of work later, but we need them first to approve the forms. The ethics board is critical later in the operation. So the new council after the election will be seated at the first business meeting, which is one week after the election this year. So you need to take that into account for all the other business that you're dealing with. I know that Jim and Barry will be talking about. Uh, I know that Jim and Barry will be talking about the budget and how the budget scheduling, because it's that time of year for that, too, um, needs to be reflected, I know in years, for the election, we usually try to get the budget passed before a new council comes in so that they are not saddled with voting on it the day they take office and have no background on it, so that will mean an expedited schedule for you. So lots of logistics. If there's concerns, it's still early enough since we're in January that we can make changes, but as we go down the funnel, we're not going to have as many choices. So if you have any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Questions for Jay? Thank you, Jay. That's, and Clara, very, uh, important business. Okay, let's move along into new business. First item under new business is monthly financial report. Anyone care to make a motion to approve the financial report?
Motion to approve the monthly financial report.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion to approve the financial report.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So carried. Next, the, uh, accounts payable. Can I have a motion to approve the accounts payable?
Motion to approve the accounts payables.
In a second.
Second.
You have any questions or discussions on the accounts payable? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, like sign. Next is the ratification of the Evapco Public Works Agreement. Do we have a motion to approve the Evapco Public Works Agreement?
That's supposed to be in our packets?
It's our standard format. Um, Attorney Gullers, Gallow has reviewed it. I am seeing now that it, it's not in the packet, but it's, um, the surety has been posted. It's our standard BWA, um, with applicable sessions, sections omitted because it is just a parking lot project, um, but it, it is all good to go.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve the ratification of Evapco Public Works Agreement.
In a second.
I will second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. So carried. Finally, under new business, I have water recharge program. This is what we, um, discussed last month, I assume. Anyone care to make a motion to the, for, to approve water recharge program?
Mayor Protam, at this point, we're just, uh, looking for consensus as to that we're heading in a direction council agrees with. Um, in, in your packet, right behind, uh, my report, there is some suggested text, uh, for the water chapter as well as the building construction chapter. Um, I realized earlier today that there, the, there's a little bit of a formatting, uh, didn't quite come through as, as expected, but, um, with regard to the water chapter, basically what we will be doing is, the idea is to replace the section that talks about there being a water replacement fee and the developer, developing a well or a water source for a project and replacing that language with language about recharge. We really haven't charged this water replacement fee. I, I, I don't know when it was really in effect, but, um, one of those instances where, you know, the, the code is not current. It's not reflecting what's really happening.
And you mentioned that Jay looked at this?
Jay has, has looked at this and, and, uh, supports the basic direction, so we have a lot of details to work out still. Yes, he's, he's seen this also. Um, but this is not in ordinance format yet. This is just to, you know, get, get consensus that we're heading in a, the right direction, you know, for this, so. The idea basically is we're going to add a definition of groundwater recharge to the water chapter. Um, we're getting rid of, as I said, the language about a water replacement fee and the developer providing a well, and we're going to require that any major subdivision or a site development plan, and we can, we can finesse the number of gallons per day, but that a site development plan over a certain threshold, um, will have to provide their own recharge for their project to move forward. The city will still pursue acquisition of recharge, but we, we want to have some on hand so that smaller projects, like an infill lot that somebody wants to put a house on or a small commercial project, won't be saddled with the, the need to go out and develop a recharge easement with, with the landowner outside of the city. So the plan is to still develop our own inventory, but require the big projects to bring their own going forward. Um, now.
Smaller projects would have to pay fee in lieu.
Right, and this would also be establishing a fee in lieu of recharge, so very similar to what we have now for our open space fee, where a developer can either dedicate a certain amount of open space within their project, or they can pay a fee in lieu of dedicating that. So rather than just adding the cost of recharge to our water benefit assessment, uh, Attorney Gallow suggested, and I concur, that we consider this an entirely separate fee, so we'll be establishing a new fee in lieu of recharge. So the big projects will provide their recharge acreage, and the smaller ones will get their recharge from a bank that we will establish, and they'll pay a fee for that. So the, the draft language basically sets that up, um, and trying to work out some language so that the minor subdivisions, which is less than three lots being created, um, and site development plans, and, you know, again, I use the figure of five thousand gallons per day. Less than that would be able to, would be eligible to, to buy the recharge, pay that, that fee instead of dedicating recharge. Um, and again, these numbers can all be tweaked as we go forward. Uh, this is just kind of the outline of how we want to do it. And then under our building construction chapter, there's a section currently that talks about applications for certificates for any new building shall be accompanied by a permit fee as affixed by council, and I would like to add to that, um, some catch-all language and all applicable impact benefit assessment fees and, and fees in lieu of dedication. So that kind of covers the whole gamut of, you know, the park impact fee, the, you know, we, we don't specifically mention every fee that we charge, um, in their respective chapter. So this is kind of a catch-off or maybe where we don't, where the code doesn't talk to a specific fee. So that's the direction we would like to head with it. Um, you know, as long as everybody's on board with the basic idea, um, the city attorney and I will flesh that out a little bit more and start drilling down on, um, you know, we will. And the language in the code will refer to the fee schedule, so, you know, we'll, and we had talked a while ago about perhaps amending the fee schedule with the fiscal year this year. Um, so we'll be looking at the fees in general, but we have some time to kind of work out what that water recharge fee should be. Um, once we talk a little bit further with property owners and see how much we're going to have to invest and how many EDUs or equivalent dwelling units worth of recharge that is. So right now, we don't know what we're going to spend and how much we're going to get, so we don't really know what the fee should be. So, but again, this is kind of the outline. If this is good, we'll try to work out the details in the coming months and, uh, you know, hopefully have an ordinance before you in the spring.
Any questions, if you have some? Everybody in agreement with allowing Jim to move forward on his current path?
Yeah.
Adjourned?
Thank you.
Okay.
That's fine.
Very good. We come to public comment pertaining to agenda items. Anyone care to make any public comments regarding the items we just reviewed?
Nobody's moving on that one.
Nobody's, nobody's speaking up, so that means we need to call for a motion to adjourn.
Actually, Mayor Protam, um, I think you may not have the most current agenda in front of you. We do have, um, nominations to the Board of Election and the Ethics Board.
I'm suffering. I do not have that agenda.
Mayor Miller asked me to, uh, announce his nominations to save his voice this evening, uh, so the mayor would like to nominate, um, to the Board of Elections for a term of twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, Michelle Harris, Alex Kelly, Ruth Gwynn, and Janice Hill.
Can I just say, I, I am a little put off by just having a list of names thrown out in front of us and asking us to approve them.
Do we want to, are we being asked to take action on these nominations tonight?
That would be ideal so that we are confident we have fully, uh, for lack of a better term, staffed boards moving into this.
Jim, just to check, sorry, you sent out the, uh, applications that they filled out last week.
I was starting to look back through my emails for it, I believe.
Wednesday, last Wednesday.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that?
I guess so, so Claire.
My apologies then.
So we did send out their, their.
Okay, alright. Or how I missed that, but.
So again, Jim, to reiterate, you said Alex Kelly, Ruth Gwynn, Robert Hill?
Uh, actually, he would be for the Ethics Commission, so for, for election, it would be.
Hill is not election, and Michelle Harris.
So Michelle Harris, Alex Kelly, Ruth Gwynn, and Janice Hill.
Okay. That's election board.
Election board, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're only going to have four, then, is that the story?
Is that what we need? Okay. And you said Robert Hill will be Ethics?
Yes.
And is that all we need for Ethics?
That fills, currently fills the board.
Okay, great.
I apologize, it was, the, the heading on that email was updated agenda, and I just thought it was an updated agenda attached. I did not look at the, um, I, I, my apologies there.
Okay, you need a motion for this, or?
Yeah, I guess we will. Anyone care to make a motion to approve, um, the, the mayor's nominees, either individually or collectively?
I move to approve the four members mentioned to the Board of Elections and the one remaining member, Mr. Hill, to the Ethics Commission.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Just to clarify, the term for the Ethics is, uh, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. The ayes have it. Is there anything on the agenda that I don't know about?
Council member reports?
Council reports, that's true. That's something we always do. Let's start with, uh, with Councilor Tillman and see what he has to say from.
I have actually nothing to say today because, um, we haven't met since, um, since November, uh, at the Planning Commission, uh, with the holidays falling the way that they have. Uh, I can say that we do have coming up, um, next Tuesday is a, uh, Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting. Then, these are meetings that are open to the public, and we welcome public comment, and, uh, coming up on Tuesday at six-thirty, uh, we should be getting a, um, an analysis of the Comprehensive Plan Survey that was sent out, uh, and that was filled out and returned by, uh, about twenty, a little over twenty percent of the households, uh, here in the city of Tawney Town are very happy with that response. Um, so that, that's coming up on Tuesday, and then, uh, at the end of the month, on the last Monday, uh, is the regular Planning Commission meeting at seven-thirty, and, uh, welcome.
Hi, Councilman.
Okay, so I have, uh, Parks and Recs report that I'm going to read for, um, Councilwoman Fuller first. Um, so updates from Lorena. Engineering continues on the Memorial Park expansion project. They met last week with an adjacent property owner, the Renahands, to discuss the possibility of an easement in order to more economically and efficiently direct stormwater flow, and they have agreed to allow an easement on their property for this purpose. The Christmas tree lighting held on December seventh was a success despite the cold weather. The holiday decorating contest wrapped up at the end of December with thirty-eight Bison Street taking first place, seventy Kenan Street second place, and seventy-five Trevannian Road third place. Thanks to all who participated and helped make Tawney Town shine all the brighter for the holidays, and to the judges for reviewing all of the entry addresses. There were so many beautiful decorated houses, and it was hard to select only three winners. Our next event isn't until the Easter egg hunt on April twelfth. In the meantime, we're already receiving registrations for other twenty-twenty-five events. We are working on coordinating the recreational programs such as yoga and tennis. All events are posted on the Parks and Rec Facebook page, our website, calendar, and at the library, and are also announced via the Tawney Town Connect app. And then the last thing from Lorena is that the next Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting is this Wednesday, the fifteenth, following the six-thirty PM TAA meeting. So that's it for Parks and Rec. Um, I have the Police Department Monthly Report. There were four hundred twenty-three total dispatched or generated calls for service in December twenty-twenty-four. There were sixty-eight total citations issued, sixty-four warnings issued, eight adult arrests, and one juvenile arrest. Um, as far as community outreach, on December seventh, the Tawney Town Police Department participated in the city's annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony at Memorial Park. They also, in partnership with Trinity Lutheran Church and Trail Life Troop Ten Forty-two, collected non-perishable food items at Kenny's Market on December eighth for the annual Pack the Police Car Food Drive. This year, all cash and food donations were used to benefit the Carroll County Food Sunday Food Bank and our local community. Thirty boxes of groceries were packed and hand-delivered by members of the Police Department to needy families. The Tawney Town Police Department also partnered with the nonprofit organization Free Bikes for Kids to distribute thirty refurbished bikes to our local, local community kids. This was made possible with the help of the Wiant Chevrolet Office staff. On December fifteenth, the Police Department held their second animal, annual December to Remember Toy Drive. It's estimated that they received six hundred-plus toys this year, which benefited hundreds of families in our community. The event was a spectacular success, filled with holiday cheer, Santa, food, crafts, and of course, toys. We would like to thank the Tawney Town community for making all of these events a huge success. Without the grand show of generosity that our Tawney Town community displayed, none of these wonderful events would be possible. Um, this past week was also Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so a huge thank you to all of our, um, ELOs for all they do for our town. Um, almost done. As far as training from December, um, our new hire for the Police Department, David Beck, was very busy this month. He completed seventeen hours of Police One courses, and also annual firearms training, and, uh, ECD, which is TASER training, and CTS less lethal impact munitions. He completed eighty hours of field training through the dates of December thirteenth to December twenty-fourth and is now fully certified. Um, in other specialized training, Sergeant Schultz completed FBI LIDA Supervisor Leadership Institute from December second to sixth, and a two-hour course of instruction in Links Administrator Training. Patrolman First Class Eccles completed a one-hour Links X recertification course. Sergeant Schultz was also recertific, recertified in Links X. Haley Engels completed a six-week speed Spanish course through Hagerstown Community College and received her certification. She also attended the webinar Hot Topics for Certified Passenger Safety Technicians. The entire department completed annual TASER training, which includes a classroom portion, live fire, and scenarios where students engage in role-playing wearing a halt suit. The entire department also completed CTS less lethal impact munitions operator training, which includes a classroom portion and a course of fire.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chaney. Councilwoman Foster, would you like to give your report?
Okay, um, happy.
Okay, Habitat for Humanity is gearing up to review, the Family Selection Committee is gearing up to review applications for individuals interested in applying for a Habitat home. So if you are aware of anyone that might be interested, please have them contact Habitat and put in an application. Under Public Works, the well levels remain stable from previous months. However, as the city manager mentioned, he would check to see about the fluctuation of that one well. But according to DPW, they remain stable. The lead service line inventory, the initial lead line survey and records inspection has been submitted to MDE. The next step for the city is to investigate 10% of the lines that were reported as unknown. This investigation will include sending out notices to residents to allow DPW into their homes to look at the water service entering the home, and also digging around the service line to confirm pipe material as well. There will also be notifications sent to residents if their lines are found to be lead or galvanized steel and need to have them replaced. Those letters were mailed out on November 11th. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foster. I have no comments on economic development in light of recent changes. I'll, I'll my remarks till next month and after our planning session, so. Is there anything else to come before the group?
We've covered everything.
For a motion for adjournment.
Who to adjourn?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your patience, and there, I hope you're better soon.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor President, for filling in.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.